Thank you, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order here in Council Chambers at 6:00 p.m. We do not have any remote electronic attendance. Please keep Mr. Timmy in your thoughts. He is running right pride in this heat. And we, our next items are presentations. I'd like to flip the order and have our awards done first and then the presentation from Western Illinois. So I have awards from the Neighborhood Partnership Committee, July 2023 Neighbor of the Month Awards to Marie Antevaros Mercado on Fifth and Gail Derrer, a resident of Moline. So we are, I guess I'm not at the microphone. Come on up.
Yeah, what's the podium?
I don't know. Just got away from a microphone, but just for friends that are with us, KJ put me under a beautiful, you know, non-sterile award. That's pretty cool. And, and just the other day, was it Wednesday? Wednesday I was touring, I was taking a big wing from work around. They wanted to tour Moline. It was really lovely to be able to talk about how to drive past it on all sides and share that. So thank you so much for the commitment you've made to Moline. And we, we will thank you so much.
Can I get you one to take off these things?
Thank you.
And for our resident award, we have Gail Derrer. Hello.
Hello.
Thank you so much for all you've done. Identify your neighborhood and your home. This is our also non-sterile award. I assume you all saw it online, but we're very thankful for all of your, your, your.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. You're going to hold it?
Beautiful.
Thank you.
All right. Our second presentation today is Kristi Mindrup, Vice President of Operations of Western Illinois University Quad Cities. Please join us.
Very good. Thank you. I'm so happy to be here today with all of you today. It's beautiful, hot Midwest summer day and just very happy to share some highlights from Western Illinois University. Before I do, I'd like to introduce a couple of my colleagues who are here with me today, including Jennifer Von Kennel, who's our Director of Corporate Relations and Development, and also a new position for WIU Quad Cities, our Executive Director of Career Center and Quad Cities Outreach, demonstrating our commitment to the area, is Audrey Adams. A familiar face to many of you in the room. We're very happy to have her onboard in that new position. She's been with Western for sixteen, no, eleven years. And Jen for about two now. So we're very happy to have them with me today. Just want to share some highlights to give you a picture, an illustration of the good things happening at Western Illinois University's campus in the Quad Cities. And talk a little bit about our mission, which is to be a destination for quality academics here in the Quad Cities, a hands-on opportunity for students to gain valuable experience and also through their experiences to contribute to our workforce in the region and beyond. Our core values are academic excellence, educational opportunity, personal growth, and social responsibility. And everything we do centers on these values. I'd like to share with you a little bit about our students. We have a really diverse population of students, both in background and also their experiences. Justine is a great example of that. Her story, she says, went in many directions. She attended school at thirty and found her passion at WIU in the Quad Cities. Austin Tubbs, Austin's a really great student, very involved with the Student Government Association. Visits my office frequently because he's very interested in a long-term path in higher education. Ella Lingafelter, she is one of our more traditional students. Her pathway through scholarships completely covered her cost of education. And I believe she's one of our youngest graduates at WIU, finishing at, did she finish at eighteen? Right through her dual enrollment experience and so on. So she is definitely one of many success stories. Where we are today, just some facts and figures. Western Illinois University has, of course, a longstanding campus in McComb, Illinois, since 1899. The campus in Moline, since, actually, our location in Moline is going on eleven years, but we've been in the Quad Cities over 100 years in various formats. A lot of people may not be aware of that. And of course, online. You see our student-to-faculty ratio focuses on one-to-one attention with faculty. We have a total university enrollment of 7,500. And during a time of national decline, we're very happy that it's stable at this time. We award millions of dollars in scholarships and have had no annual cost increase for several years. Student demographics, that's a snapshot of the entire university. We have a commitment to diversity at the university to create access and opportunity for all students. Affordability and student success. Mentioned affordability before. You can see the cost of tuition for the university is highly competitive in the area, the state, and beyond. Student services. We have a highly active student population on campus. Even though it's typically a commuter campus, though we have students living proximate to campus, they're still highly involved through our 22-student organizations, academic leadership opportunities, and also opportunities to be involved in the community. Our Career Center that I mentioned, Audrey is the director of, creates wonderful opportunities for students on all of our campuses to connect with employers throughout the region. We have career fairs that involve all of the colleges and universities in the area that we collaborate on. And you can see the impact in job placement, preparation, and all of the wonderful things the Career Center does for students at Western. Campus spaces, just highlighting a few of those. We've done a lot over the past couple of years in particular to make the campus spaces more activated. We started, as you know, with a brand-new building. And sometimes when you do that, you know, the walls are gray and the furniture is new and it can feel a little bit sterile. We've had a lot of student input, a lot of community input as well, about how those spaces should take shape. So everything from our science labs to our spaces for social engagement, as well as our food pantry and our Dress for Success area on campus, all are designed to serve students. A few of those other spaces. If you have a chance to come to campus, please do. Especially this time of year, it's a very beautiful time to be on campus with the natural vegetation. Creates a wonderful quad for our students, faculty, staff, and community members. Our academic programs. This is a list that might surprise you. Students in the Quad Cities through the campus have access to undergraduate, graduate, and online programs, all the way up through the PhD program. And they are a mix of on-campus, online coursework that lead to the degrees in those different areas. Quad Cities-based program impact. So I'm going to highlight the programs that are physically based at the Quad Cities campus in their entirety. There are actually four Western programs that have directors, faculty, that are only in the Quad Cities. So I'm highlighting those for you today, even though you saw from the list, students have access to a lot more than that. In the School of Engineering, it's all about meeting community need from the start of the program in 2009. And so the engineering program is all about creating hands-on experiences. Students have a number of internship opportunities in the Quad Cities area and they're prepared to hit the ground running once they enter the workforce. The Counseling Program, mental health, of course, is a high need in our area, and of course nationally. This program has produced more than 1,200 graduates. If you go to the area schools throughout the Quad Cities and on the outskirts, you'll be hard-pressed to find a counseling department that doesn't have at least one, two, or maybe three members of our alumni who graduated with a master's degree in counseling. Museum Studies, over 5,000 hours of experiential learning have been produced from our Museum Studies Master's Program. This program touches our partners such as the Putnam Museum, Figgy Art Museum, the Family Museum, and just a list of museums throughout the Midwest and beyond. We've had students do internships even internationally. Many of them stay here, many of them are from here, but so many of our Museum Studies students come from all over the country and beyond to attend WIU Quad Cities. Environmental Science, a PhD program based here in the Quad Cities, is all about river research. It's a small but mighty and impactful program with a national profile. Most recently, Dr. Roger Viadaro, who's the director of that school, has been part of national conversations and intrigue about rerouting the river to drought areas, right? That's a hot topic. And so he participates in those conversations and talks about the actual feasibility of doing or not doing that. The Community Impact, I mentioned. Wonderful partnership right here with the city of Moline, with our environmental science program to look at the water nutrition of the Mississippi River here in Moline, as well as to gauge flooding. We have a bird's-eye view on the Quad Cities campus of the Mississippi River flooding. And we have researchers actually out, not hip waiters, chest waiters in the Mississippi River actually doing their research. So it's really impactful work. The School of Education, we're very excited about the Early Childhood Program. It's a growing program, creates opportunities for students who are already in the workforce in maybe paraprofessional roles in schools to gain experience and earn their degree to become an early childhood teacher and professional. And we're very excited about the Spanish bilingual early learning lab site. Our designs are finalized for our location in Moline. We're so excited about that and thankful for the mayor's support and our community leader's support to be able to facilitate our location that will be at the Boys and Girls Club in Moline. And we continue to look for multiple other opportunities for additional sites. We know that that need for early learning is strong and so we don't anticipate stopping with one site. We look at continuing to develop that as interest and need grows in our community. The Small Business Development Center, also very excited to host the Boost workshops. We were so amazed. Look at that jam-packed house at the riverfront campus. Our campus, it belongs to the community. It's so wonderful to have a program like that to inspire economic development and small business entrepreneurship right here in Moline and the Quad Cities. You can see some of the statistics there below. But the SBDC serves 855 clients. And I'll note that the director of the SBDC for the entire university, as is a trend across our organization, is physically based here in the Quad Cities in Moline. Outreach and partnerships. WQPT is actually part of the university organization. It's a department within Western Illinois University. And what a great job they do to promote public television and literacy, early childhood education, and also just bringing quality programming and entertainment, the arts and culture. Our summer camps have been wildly successful. Wonderful group of faculty and staff delivered Muggles in a Wizard's World and Math on the Mississippi. And we had so many young people on campus between the ages of upper grade school to junior high. They were on campus this summer. And we really appreciated the community support that was provided for scholarships for so many of those students. Art on campus, I mentioned some of those gray walls that we had. We've been filling those with art over the past year. We had a wonderful Luchadorre's Immigrants exhibit from an Iowa artist who brought dialogue and discussion to campus about issues related to immigration and culture and art, as well as an opportunity to hold the Congressional Art Show, which is an annual event that awards recognition for a student who will then present at the, they'll actually have their work displayed in Congress for the coming year. Featured partnerships, a few familiar logos there. We're so happy to have K-12 Partners, Chamber, Mercado, Rock Island Arsenal, Cities, including Moline, and expanding beyond to Silvis and other partners, Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber, QCAD, Renew Moline, and so many more. Community Event Hub, we have so many of those same community members coming and utilizing the campus for their workshops, events, and opportunities for them to interact and integrate with our students. The Local Economic Impact, this is calculated by the Illinois Institute for Rural Affairs. So you see some of the numbers there regarding Western's economic impact and what Western contributes by producing graduates and employees here, right here in the city of Moline and also for our Quad Cities region. The Future is WIU. These are a few of our key, broad, high-level initiatives that we're focused on for our strategic plan. So we're certainly interested in our early learning program center expansion. We're looking at all of our academic programs so that they continue to meet community need, as well as student interests. Partnership expansion, partnerships are what it's all about. We're wanting to create a workforce of graduates who are contributing citizens. They are productive, they have expertise, they're innovative and creative, and we're committed to doing that in an innovative and collaborative way. Western is so excited to be part of the Quad Cities higher education scene. This is a destination for higher education. We have so many choices for our students. And we're very excited that students continue to make Western Illinois University in the Quad Cities their choice for higher education. You can follow us on social media. Those are four different sources. Please do follow, share, see what's happening at WIU. Reach out if you have questions. We're collaborative in spirit and we really appreciate the opportunities to connect with our community, create opportunities for students, and just serve the region as a higher education partner. That's all I have and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Yes, Ms. Finch?
I saw promoting diversity, equality, and inclusion in the pie chart. Does a Supreme Court case involving affirmative action affect WIU's ability to continue to diversify?
Our commitment to diversify is still there. And so we may need to find creative ways to continue to do that. There are multiple facets to what every student brings to their experience and so we find ways to support them socially, environmentally, as well as financially.
Can I ask one more?
Sure.
The community profits from homegrown professionals, which fields are in highest demand? And does it differ from different regions of the state?
Which fields here are in highest demand?
Compared to like down south?
Right. So, so the Quad Cities Chamber has done a number of watershed analyses for labor need. And so within our strategic plan, we have a response to that through programmatic planning that involves three areas. So innovation in science and all of the jobs and careers that might fit under that umbrella. Health, education, and public service. Public service could include things like law enforcement, as well as healthcare and some other maybe social services areas. And then also enterprise and commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to that. I know number two under the initiatives was expanding programs. And I know you know my interest in expanding the counseling program of masters, either MSW or the counseling program. Are we any closer to being able to put resources toward more professors so that you can take advantage of this waiting list of people for that program?
Yeah, that's, that's a challenge that we have had and we continue to address. We have a number of full-time onsite faculty for the counseling program. And within that, what Mayor's referring to is we have accreditation that, that has a faculty-to-staff ratio that we have to maintain. And so our ability to add faculty will continue to grow that program. And we're dedicated to charting a course forward that we will be able to do that. We are right now in a spot where we're looking at financial sustainability and making decisions. So we are well-positioned to be able to grow those high-need areas on into the future.
Well, as a follow-up to that, I just read my daily email from the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And our, our new president, the mayor of Reno, Nevada, Hillary Sheen, mental health is like her, her thing that she's pushing. And so she, along with others, were just in Washington, D.C., advocating. They said that we need 100,000, 100,000 mental health care workers to deal with the situation in our country. So I'm just thinking about what that means here, knowing our conversations with Chief Gold, et cetera. Anything you guys can do to fast-track that, which is such a successful program for you all, would benefit the community immensely.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Question? Thank you so much for sharing. It's great to have an update. We'll be back another time.
Sounds great. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Is there any other public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to questions on the agenda. And I do have three items for you. Actually, potentially four. Due, number one is due to a request received by city staff, the Cal Council minutes from July 26, 2022 have been, is that correct, 2022?
Yes.
Yes. Have been edited, removing the name of the petitioner and replacing it with the words "the petitioner" in response to a Judicial Privacy Act request. Okay? Another item is 6.1 has been pulled and it will be discussed further by the project management team. This is about the scheduling of their meeting time. We're running into a glitch there. And item 13.3, the change order with Centennial Contractors has been pulled to the non-consent agenda for discussion. And what, the fourth one was, I think you see this ordinance, letter Council Bill, in front of you. Ms. Kasopolis, would you explain to them why it's sitting in front of them?
Which item is that number?
Sure, that I'm, I'm.
It's item 16.1.
Yes. So that is the actual ordinance that we are asking you to look at and vote on tonight. There was a confusion at Plan Commission. They received the first draft of that ordinance. This actually, what is before you is the correct and complete ordinance for your consideration. The difference between what was in your agenda packet and what you have before you are four additional conditions for stacking spaces. So if you are, you know, are familiar enough with that ordinance, there are conditions in addition to what is in there for stacking spaces, which is when people line up in their vehicles at a drive-through or, or whatnot. And the additions are as follows. Stacking spaces shall be designed so as not to interfere with the ingress and egress to the off-street parking, traffic circulation on or off-site, and traffic visibility. That's the first one. Second is drive-through facilities shall not be located in the front of the principal building and the maneuvering space shall be provided in the side or rear yard. The third one is drive-through facilities shall provide a bypass lane. And fourth is stacking spaces should be separated from pedestrian paths or marked with signs to indicate such path to drivers and requirement to yield to pedestrians. So those are the four additional conditions that were not in the draft ordinance in your agenda but are included here.
And, and this is just up for sending it to second reading? It is not a final passage?
Correct.
Any questions? Yes, Ms. Finch?
Your Honor, I request that at some point we take a recess to be allowed to read what is in front of us.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be now, it can be later. That's fine.
Yeah, we'll see where we're at.
I don't think it's been misrepresented. I just need more time to digest and try to have any questions.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Anything further on those agenda changes? Chief, could you please open the door? We're not in closed session and it feels wrong. Thank you. Okay, so we do not have a Cal agenda item now that we've pulled 6.1. So we move to our informational on the 2022 to 24 Action Plan Dashboard. Mr. Vitas?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. Included in your agenda packet tonight was the second quarter Action Plan Dashboard report, which reports out on our 2022 to 2024 strategic plan, which is the current plan until we adopt the update, which is going to be coming shortly before you, probably the next meeting. As you know, there were 85 goals in the original strategic plan comprising about $27 million in spending across, across multiple funds within the, within the city budget. Of that 85 as of today, end of July, we have 32 that are completed. We have 16 that are 90% complete or above, meaning that they will shortly be completed in the current fiscal year. We have five that are about 75% underway and there are 12 that are 50% or more. So it's safe to say that the city is pushing forward successfully with full implementation of its strategic plan. And we will continue that process. Most recently, the library development plan, the residential smoke detector program, the public art and placemaking program, resident health and wellness checks program, small business mentorship program, startup business accelerator program, any interior grant program, which you know are part of Boost. Those are done, those are completed. They have been launched as they were intended to. So now, once they've been launched, so that we're clear, some things when I say they're complete, it means that they are complete as far as a goal, but then they become ongoing programs. So many of these things, like the grant programs, accelerator program, mentorship program, all of those things are ongoing within, within the CED department. So if there's any questions behind that, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions about any particular program or project that's underway. And I'm always available if you want to stop in and say hi and have a cup of coffee and talk about any project or program that we're working on.
Yes, Ms. Finch?
I have a question about the quiet zone. The FRA grant, does that usually take 18 months for approval? Or is there a reason why it was?
Our FRA expert, who I've charged with the full responsibility for the project, David Drier, has been charged with this project since day one. So David, if you'd be there to answer.
You can come to the podium, please.
Not much to say other than that they just volunteered that your application goes into their inbox and it'll take 18 months before they can be able to pick it up. But we did have a meeting with them, phone conference, with our consultant and an FRA representative where we discussed the smaller scope of the project, given that we didn't get the quiet zone funding. And we thought that with the fewer crossings that they may be able to reduce that review time. So that was good news. So the next step is preparing our notice of intent and moving forward with that. So that's where we are at. And that'll be in our status and inventory status.
Send the status and information report.
Informational report.
Cross-check, that's the cross-check.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Finch? I had a quick question. How many chapters do we have left for the code review? I was like, that's a lot. Have we finished most of it?
Oh, gosh, no.
No.
We're about halfway.
Okay.
Halfway?
Yeah.
You weren't even here.
Okay, it is a big code, but okay. Thank you. I wanted to note for council, some of the items, like the one on native plants that was recommended to just be taken out because of the past unsuccessful things around it. I just wanted to let council know that even if that comes out, there have been some, has been some interest from. been some interest from folks working in the community on sustainable, excuse me, food access and pollinator gardens, et cetera, and there could be something coming through related to that that we can support. So not necessarily going away for good, but it's always nice when the community is, you know, ground up, interested in something and willing to make it happen, so more to come on that. And Mr. Vitas and I touched base on, when is the housing program coming to us, right? They are, that, you know, that's a full revamp in a sense of how we're going to address a lot of different things related to housing, so I thought, could you just give them the summary you gave me about when we can look for that?
Sure, I'm more than happy to, Mayor. As you know, back in February, we presented an overview. It was a very comprehensive overview of all things housing in Moline, not just with the city, but with all of our in locutors and partners that we do business with, who have some role or function within the housing marketplace. So we know that from a funding standpoint, we had created at least, you know, a position, a rental housing coordinator position that was created, and that position was filled. So that position is there, but it's not, you know, because we don't have a full-blown housing program, they're not doing that full-time right now, but they have plenty of other work to do, I assure you. The plan is, going forward with the fiscal '24 budget and beyond, is to start to roll out a new housing program, and with that, based upon the numbers that were presented, slowly roll out that half a million dollar cost and not do it all at once. It's just too big of a, it's just too big of a bite at the apple all at once, and we can't fix in one year what took decades to create. So recognizing that reality, the plan is, is to start bringing on maybe, you know, a quarter of that cost or half of that cost going into the next fiscal year budget, bringing in half the staffing and half the equipment that we talked about, and then starting that program up in earnest after the first of the year. I mean, my concern is, is we don't want to get a false start on it, and I don't have the resources to throw at it right now. It's not even in this current year budget. So it will be budgeted for fiscal '24.
Okay. And then briefly, along the lines of the strategic plan, we touched base in Bob's and my meeting this week, he had a very long list of things that needed to be tied up, and one that, one of them is the feedback we gave about the strategic plan, right? Back in March, when we talked through some of the new councilperson's ideas at the roundtable. May, May.
You meant May.
I don't know where March came from.
Don't worry, I said it.
That's going to come back, you know, those changes, things we talked about will come back in September or October.
Sooner.
Or sooner. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anything else from anyone else?
Yes, I just have, I just have a question. It had mentioned that the police department staffing has gotten worse, I was just kind of wondering where we were at and how far below we are from like optimal staffing.
Yeah, after that big recruiting, no, that was fired that had the big recruiting. Sorry, chief.
This is not, this is never talked.
I just, if you don't want to, but.
Well, yeah.
All right, it's not good. We only had five people test for the last application, and I have greater than six openings, so I didn't even have enough applications. So one person withdrew last week, so I think we're down to four on the list, Lee, correct? And one of them is 20, can't be hired. So right now, we're doing backgrounds on three applicants. So I have six, six FTE vacancy, full-time vacancies, but I'm down like 20, because I have two people deployed in the military, two people injured, somebody else on, out on FMLA, so it's not good. And, and we're not alone in this problem, this is a nationwide problem, and we really haven't been able to resolve it. We invested $48,000 in a ad campaign, and we're still kind of in the same boat. I, I think part of the problem is the workforce, unemployed workforce in the Quad Cities is pretty low. I mean, we're battling for the same employees that every other department is, and we see a lot of the people that are on a police department's list are on everybody's list. So we, we just lost one person that was on our list, we lost Rock Island County, had already taken a job prior to us even getting interviews done, so I don't know if Lee wants to comment on anything else, but we've tried nearly everything. We just, we expanded it out further and further, and it's, it's a very tough market right now.
And every monthly status and information report, he'll have an update with those details in it.
Sad report.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to recess, or how? Yeah, we need a motion for five, five minutes at this time.
Make a motion to recess for five minutes.
Oh, Lord. That was Schmidt and Murphy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll recess. Be back at 6:40, please. Our recess is now complete.
Hi, thank you, Mayor.
So I will call this regular council meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is given invocations? No, I do not. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian? Finch?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting Minutes of July 18, 2023, and consent agenda items 13.1, 13.2, 13.4, and 13.5 inclusively. Make a motion to approve. Thank you, Ms. Finch. Second. Seconded by Alderperson Castro. Roll call, please. Alderperson Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item 13.3, a resolution approving change order number one with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated for project number 1415-2023 patching program for the amount of $787,325. Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by O'Brien. Discussion.
Do you want any explanation?
For discussion. Yes, Mr. Vitas, why don't you give an explanation?
So this, this specific change order, which was presented tonight, is really to address the infrastructure issues in the city, and then the timeliness of getting the work done, given the timeframe that the batch plants are open, and the time that they close, and the time it would take to go off for bid again, and with the availability of the resources, the number of streets that we could actually get to and cause repairs to, between now and the time the snow flies is critical, because as you know, the more open holes we have, the less patching we do, the more steep the street deterioration we get during the winter, winter months and during the freeze and thaw. So keeping the water from permeating below the roadway is actually the key. So with that, we're recommending that we go ahead and approve the change order at the staff level, and we're recommending to council that we do that. Otherwise, we're just going to be looking to patch those roads next year, and the, and the unit prices that we're at right now, we have no idea if those unit prices will even come back, or they'll be higher because we're at the tail end of the construction season. So, David, anything else, maybe you want to add to it?
Sorry, I didn't, I was checking emails, I didn't hear you start this one up. So yes, this is additional funding that Finance provided that was available, and that if we could find a way to expand a program, and so this is the third of several significant change orders that you've had in the last two meetings. It's a 49% increase, so it doesn't trigger the supermajority vote, and it lets us continue the patching program, just catching failed spots on the streets. We figure we can capture about 27 to 30 additional projects with the program, and it covers things like raising inlets and dealing with failed joints and those types of things.
Utility repairs as well?
Exactly.
Because as you know, we get a lot of utility repairs from broken water mains.
$150 to $200 a year, yes.
How many?
$150 to $200 utility patches generally, depending on, you know, that went through in things.
Okay, Mr. Macias?
Thank you, Your Honor. While it doesn't trigger the supermajority vote, and I'm all for getting all the streets done as soon as possible, it does it, being that it's such a significant percentage increase, does it kind of look bad that we don't maybe bid out again, or?
I don't know if I can answer that with respect to appearances. I mean, you could roll the, roll the money over to the next year, the contract has a provision that if the contractor holds the prices, that, that they would get this additional work as well. The, the issue is that we just, you just don't know what the future holds, the prices will be. The council has the ability to authorize a change order through this process, I guess, I don't know if Margaret wants to. There's any legal advice on that or not, but.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
I think, I think taking pause and saying, hey, what's going on here, is definitely appropriate. We had a similar issue last week, and then this one comes up this week, so that can be concerning, at the same time, I think that balances with, we know that roads are one of our biggest sticking points, and these are opportunities for us to expand those projects. If we were talking about whole new roads or whole new types of work, I would not be comfortable moving forward this process, but to just expand it, I think the state of our roads justifies the action, and I feel very comfortable going back to the citizens of Moline and telling them we did this to make sure we can get more of our roads done. And that, to me, is the biggest priority and why I support moving forward.
And, and I would add that this is a maintenance function, and it's consistent with the IMS report of, of trying to perform more maintenance, to spend a dollar here rather than spending 10 for a full reconstruction because the street failed.
Thank you so much. If there's nothing further, roll call, please. Alderperson Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda second reading ordinances. Item number 15.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 8, Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services of the Moline Code of Ordinances, by repealing Chapter 8 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Chapter 8 dealing with the same subject matter.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Anything further you wanted to add, Mr. Tany? No? Okay. And everyone was clear, got my email forward with some more explanations of the benefits and of doing this before the state tells us to do it, et cetera. Thank you. If there's nothing further, roll call, please. Alderperson Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. Item number 16.1, a zoning text amendment ordinance amending Chapter 35, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances regarding minimum off-street parking and traffic circulation standards for in-vehicle sales and service uses.
Move to advance to second reading?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Macias, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt?
I'd like to understand the justification for some of these additional restrictions, particularly numbers, particularly number three, I guess is the only one that I have any concern about, of items not being located in the front of the principal building and the maneuvering space provided on the side or rear yard.
Maybe Sean can speak to that. Sean, maybe he didn't even hear the question, so if you come up, that'd be great. Or Jennifer, whoever.
While Sean approaches, I would add that these are very typical conditions in, in many ordinances, and they're both aesthetic and safety.
Okay, what was the question again?
Why number three?
My number what?
Number three.
Drive-through facility shall not be located in front of the principal building and the maneuvering space shall be provided in the side or rear yard. Yeah, that was a typical regulation that's, that's in many ordinances, so this is what was recommended by the attorney, Dan Bullen, who studied the issue. And generally speaking, we don't allow parking in the front yard and that kind of thing, and it's, it's partially for aesthetic reasons, and it's also to, it's to add to the safety of the traffic circulation.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Your Honor, I was just going to go ahead and ask in advance, I'd be asked, allowed to speak more than twice, given the change that came to this at the meeting.
Yeah, I need advice on how to suspend the rules.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's a motion. Okay.
Make the motion to suspend the rules of debate for discussion of this issue.
Second.
All right, motion by Schmidt, seconded by Macias. I still have to do a roll call because we're in full council. Roll call, please. Alderperson Castro?
Aye.
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. All right, please continue.
Do we have any buildings in the city of Moline that currently violate this, or type of businesses that have set up when this restriction was not in place? I'm thinking specifically of like, drive-up coffee shops, right? Most McDonald's and those others, because these are pretty standard restrictions, have everything down the side, but I can think of several more like coffee businesses or local businesses that have employed what could be considered front yard, drive-ups. Would this sort of prevent that sort of development in the future?
It would unless they asked for a variance, that particular standard. This also is forward-looking, it doesn't address anything that's already in existence. That'd be, those would be non-conforming if that was the case, that they were built that way.
Anything further, Mr. Schmidt?
So, and this relates a little bit to that and the non-conforming issue, I'm also thinking of number four, with drive-through facilities shall provide a bypass lane, which I, that is a super important one, but we do have a variety of non-conforming places that exist that I think do pose, you know, safety concerns and risks. Is there, what sort of actions would require those businesses to become conforming?
For that, I'd have to look into the non-conforming section of the ordinance, we just updated that, and that was more or less to bring them into closer compliance with landscaping and lighting.
Is that usually triggered by a renovation of a certain amount, essentially?
Yeah, 25% is a trigger, and then if it gets over 75% of the valuation of the, of the structure in comparison, comparison with the, the value, that would be the value of the billing permit in relation to the value of the structure as determined by the assessment information or an appraisal. Yeah, if they're over 75%, they're supposed to be 100% compliant. I don't really, it doesn't seem to me that this would be brought to bear. I'd have to maybe ask one of the attorneys to look at that again, but, you know, there's like the A&amp;W down at South Park Mall, and that doesn't have a bypass lane, to my knowledge, and, and the queuing lanes are too short, really, it causes traffic problems inside of the shopping center and on the public rights away.
But what you're saying, just for clarity's sake, is like the non-conforming ordinance we just passed, it's forward-looking as opposed to bringing everyone in line from the past.
That's correct. If they redid their parking lot, for instance, then we would probably tell them, you're going to have to add a bypass lane now.
Well, along those lines, I'd like to piggyback on number four. Well, along those lines, I'd like to piggyback on number four. When we say bypass lane, are we talking about a bypass lane that bypasses the actual window? Or a bypass lane around? Because I'm thinking of the Dunkin' Donuts up on Avenue of the Cities. There is no space between the road and the right-of-way and the lane that goes past the window to ever have a bypass lane up at the window. But clearly, you can enter from Avenue of the Cities and come around and bypass everybody and get out to the road. So, you know, and behind. So what I'm asking for clarity on is, where is this bypass lane?
Well, there would have to be room to provide it, that's true. If there wasn't, it would be on the property, whichever property is in question.
Right, but does the bypass at the back of the, at the back of an establishment count, right? Because there would be no room for a place like that, or the places you quoted, you know, at the mall kind of thing, where it's just like a chute.
Well, it would have, it's hard to really contemplate that without looking at a site plan or something. But wherever there is room for a bypass lane, it would have to be provided, say it was a new development or redevelopment. If it couldn't be provided for some reason, they would have to ask for a variance to that particular standard.
Okay, I understand that. I guess this one, the bypass lane, I understand it. I would be, if I were in their shoes, and again, I only sit here giving recommendations unless I have to vote, right? I would be nervous about that one because I wouldn't want to limit businesses that can build or take over a space because they can't have, they don't, can't have a bypass lane right next to the lane that goes by the window. Like I said, I need clarity to know whether a bypass around the back is just fine. But this doesn't, unless there's a definition of bypass I'm not aware of, you know, somewhere in there. I think we need the definition of bypass. So I, I'm just offering to the council, I have a question about that one. I would love to know what the answer to that is before this would be up for a final reading.
Well, we could look further into that, but this just basically says you have to have one of these lanes. It doesn't specify the location, like if it's next to it.
So in that sense, that there is flexibility?
Yes, it's, it's non-specific as far as the location, exactly where it's going.
Okay, I understand that. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, there could be different configurations.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. O'Brien?
So, you're talking about some of my favorite places. That's all the places I go to. So I'm kind of an expert on this field. So if Dunkin' Donuts leaves and Krispy Kreme comes in, does Krispy Kreme then, they don't have to change, do they? Or do they have to adhere to the ordinance?
No, that's just, that's not a change of use.
Okay.
There is a provision in the ordinance, though, if something is abandoned for twelve months or more, it can't be reinstated.
Okay.
Which is pretty limiting in a lot of cases. We've had that pop up over and over again.
Mr. Messias?
But thank you. Like in that case, let's say it's after, you know, eighteen months. Could they ask for a variance and eventually come up to counsel and we override or make the exception?
Yeah, for a development standard, you should be able to vary those, yeah. That would go to just the plant commission also.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions on this? Here, yes, Mr. Razak?
Thank you very much. I think it needs to be clarified and stated very clearly and very specific way. There should not be any confusion about it.
Okay. But you also do understand why there's the flexible wording as well?
Yes.
All right. Hearing no further questions or comments, the motion is to advance to second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number sixteen point two, an ordinance amending Chapter Four, Alcoholics Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class C licenses in the city at the request of Nishan One Incorporated, DBA Amico.
Is there a motion?
Motion to advance to second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Finch. Is there a second? Second by Schmidt. Discussion? Ms. Kostopoulos, you just wanna clarify for them, or you want me as liquor commissioner? Basically, you have a business taking over. This is not adding a liquor license. It's, it's what happens sometimes when, because they're not transferable, right? The number comes down and then they apply for that license.
Didn't we, didn't we do that last week? I thought we advanced this last week.
No, this is a different place. That was, yeah. Ms. Castro?
So just for clarification, it's going up to thirty-eight, but then going back down to thirty-seven. So we're not actually adding anything. They're just.
It was going down to thirty-seven.
Because we lost one, and then we're gonna go back up to the thirty.
Go back to where it was.
Got it, yeah.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number sixteen point three, an ordinance amending Chapter Thirty, Cable Video Service Provider Fee and Customer Protection of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter Thirty in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new Chapter Thirty dealing with the same subject matter.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and the motion to advance to second reading carries. And that is all I have this evening.
Okay. Under miscellaneous business, lots has been going on, lots of meetings happening, whether it's development or folks with issues, et cetera. And as you know, in my position, I sit on multiple boards across the Quad Cities. One of them is the Rock Island Arsenal Defense Alliance, which its sole purpose is to make sure the arsenal stays and all the jobs and business that's created because of it. And I wanted you to know, I wanted to run this by you all. In their partnership, or as we've taken on a full-time executive director, Mike Hutchison, who has an extensive background in federal contracting, et cetera, they're basically getting this organization back in working order. Kind of similar to how we talked about MCDC when Janelle was here and how she's come in and done that. And part of that includes asking the public partners to increase the dues that they're paying to support this work. Right now, every city in the Big Seven, which if you're not familiar with that, the Big Seven is Rock Island, Moline, East Moline, Bettendorf, and Davenport, plus the two counties, Rock Island and Scott County. We each pay, minus a little bit in East Moline, they must have changed something a few years ago, seventeen thousand four hundred dollars yearly to support Riada. And they're asking that to go up to twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars. And, you know, the conversation was varied. People at, those of us, you know, other mayors there and some private business there, thought that that wasn't too much. But for what, for what it's, they're trying to do. But it'd be the kind of thing that I'd be taking a vote on, committing dollars, and I wanted to run that by all of you. And I don't need an answer this minute, but at some point, I need to double-check with Administrator Betas. You know, where are we at with the spending limits? You know, whether he just goes ahead and does that, or we have to take a vote to do that, or, you know, any of the procedural stuff there. The benefit is the six thousand jobs that are part of this community, that, that we have people in relationship with folks that can make sure that continues. Because they call it a BRAC, the Base Realignment. Those realities were here several years ago, where they, they basically split up. They choose a base or two or three, however many they need to, to basically shut down. So we don't, we don't want that to happen. So this would be an investment in our community's labor market and business environment. So I wanted you to know about that. One of the things we did ask was, are you gonna charge us maybe related to our, a ratio related to our population, right? So that the biggest groups are paying more than those that are smaller. And you do see that a little bit right now with the very small cities, like I think Silvis is in, Mylan is in, Eldridge, that kind of thing. And so they're looking at that. And then I made two points. I said, I would be a little more comfortable with that much of a jump in our dues. In the grand scheme of our budget, it's not huge, but every penny counts. I would be more comfortable if I knew we were also going out to Geneseo and Alito and other places, maybe Burlington. I think there are people that even drive in from there to work at the arsenal. Any place that has an employee at the arsenal, I wanted the leadership to talk to those, to those public partners. They also offered a roadmap that would also get more business investment, right? If businesses are gonna do money or do business through the arsenal, then having them support the relationship building and the efforts to keep, keep things here, it will make a difference and potentially reduce costs to the public partners. So I wanted you to have all that information. Lastly, I forgot to tell you earlier, the Great Cities Institute, this was in the item in your strategic plan dashboard. If you are interested in seeing what, what our staff is working with on the University of Illinois Chicago and that the diverse DEI work through human resources, et cetera, some of that information is here. And I know, Mr. Decker, as you said, you have another meeting very shortly to go through what a partnership can look like to help us in that. That's all I have, miscellaneous. Ms. Murphy?
I have nothing here.
Okay. Mr. Messias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Razak?
Nothing, thank you.
Finch? O'Brien? Castro?
Nothing.
Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Betas?
Sure, you know I won't let this opportunity pass. But I won't take long. I just wanted to update counsel to let you know that as of today, we have a final version of the management tool that was prepared by Strategic Government Resources, specifically the Public Works Organizational Assessment Study that the previous council had commissioned to be done. So that, that report is done. It is in, basically in my position at this moment, that of the HR Director as well as the Assistant City Administrator. And as we look at that, we are going to be, you know, making it available to anyone on council who would like to meet with us to discuss it. Conclusion is, they've made recommendations that are, in my opinion, would be multi-year, multi-fiscal year commitments that we would look at each and every year going forward. Some things that they've recommended, we can implement, you know, literally at no cost to the setting. And it's really more organizational management than it is anything else. Shifting of responsibilities and duties looking forward. So the results are in, they're great. Some of them are not surprises at all. And there are some things that are, I think, just good common sense. So it was good having Marcia Reed with SGR take a look intimately at that organization, specifically Public Works, and come back with recommendations that we can use going forward that will hopefully improve the work environment, improve the organizational structure, lead to better chain of command, better responsibility. And as we look to bring in a new Public Works Director, guarantee greater success for that individual coming into the organization, knowing that these commitments have been made. So we're gonna look at that, and I make myself available to the council at any time to talk about any aspect of that report. That's what I have for tonight.
Thank you. Anything further from staff? Chief?
A little quick is for you. Do you know what's more difficult than recruiting school crossing? No. That's easy. School crossing guards. We have a major problem with school crossing guard staffing. So I'm asking for your help, since you guys are intimately involved in your wards and your neighborhoods, is if you could go out and recruit anyone that might be able to apply for a school crossing guard in our community. The crossing guard application is up on the HR website. You can go through the city's website and direct them there. It's not a high-paying or glamorous job, and it's very difficult, before and after-school hours to recruit these positions. So it's typically been filled by retirees or people that have the alternate shift hours that can fill those positions. As you know, school hours aren't often amenable to other work hours. So I could really use your help in your neighborhoods and your communities that you represent to really rally some people before August twenty-fifth. Otherwise, we're likely gonna have to leave many of those crossings vacant. We have nine vacancies currently, and we have really struggled mightily to fill those positions since COVID. That drastically changed the workforce. We saw most of our retirees leave that position during COVID and did not return. So I'm meeting with the school district tomorrow to try to also get the word out there. But I could use your help in the communities that you represent.
Mr. Messias?
Just a quick question. Do you think you guys could put a post, which I imagine you guys will?
Yeah, yeah, we've done, we will do that again. We've done that several times. HR has done multiple recruitments. And I think this is really gonna probably be beneficial at the word-of-mouth level because it's not really a job that the traditional worker is looking for. It's probably somebody in your block or your neighborhood that really isn't even thinking about that, that you probably could have a back porch conversation with, and somebody like, oh, I could, I could do that. You know, I'm not doing anything at, you know, seven-twenty or, or two, three o'clock. You know, I could go out and, in essence, volunteer time for a half hour before and after school. It's tough, but we will do that in combination again. And then we're gonna look at, we've done a couple of times through the school communication systems. But anybody that you have in your connections to get that word out would be much appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us know. Mr. Decker?
Oh, I just had a question about that, Chief. So is it essentially every corner around every elementary school?
Yeah, so we have twenty posts plus a supervisor, crossing guard supervisor, that we would like to fill. We have not been able to fill many of those last year. But typically, they're around the elementary schools, with the exception of John Deere Middle School and a little bit around, you know, kind of conjunction of Wilson, but there's Washington and some other schools around there as well. But John Deere also has the one at Twenty-first Avenue. So we're really struggling to try to find that worker that has those available hours.
Can the applicants generally get placed at a school near, in their neighborhood or near where they live?
I mean, if there's a vacancy there, yes, which most likely is.
Could you give us the list of where the vacancies are, and then we can more target in a targeted fashion?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further public comment this evening? There's no executive session, correct? And, oh, whoops. I guess there were two things people needed to update me on today. Thank you. Can you please read, go ahead?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters five, ILCS one twenty slash two, C two, deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, dash five, ILS, I, I'm sorry, ILCS one twenty slash two, C two, intending probable or imminent litigation, dash five, ILCS one twenty slash two, C eleven.
Second?
All right, that's Murphy and Schmidt. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
All right, thank you. We'll move to closed session. Thank you, everyone.